Officially call many to order and start with a happy birthday to Dr. Wykoff.
Happy birthday.
Giving up a celebration to be here. What a sacrifice.
Cheers to him.
Cheers.
You have before you the agenda and consent agenda. I would ask before we approve the consent agenda to remove the bills to be paid from that, and then we will take those bills to be paid up right after approval of the consent agenda, and I'll explain more about that in a moment. So is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Some move.
I think I heard Jackie and seconded by Ann. Discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have the motion carries. And now the bills to pay. Pam and myself have reimbursement for expenses that we would be paying for, so we will not be voting on that ourselves because we can't do that. So I would entertain a motion to pay the bills. Seconded by Doug, seconded by Ann. We'll vote by a show of hands. All in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, raise your right hand. Those abstaining, raise your right hand.
Wrong hand.
Motion carries by five, four, and two abstentions. Okay. Non-action reports. Construction update. Dr. Alzner.
Yeah, just a few things going on. We actually have our next construction meeting on Wednesday before we go home for the break, but so far everything seems to be moving along as we expected. We do need a little luck in getting some insulation to start coming in January so that we can continue to stay on task, but currently we still have enough projects to do around the building that we're able to stay busy. Projects are coming along nicely. If you drove by the high school, they've got a lot of the brickwork started to getting completed down by the performing arts in the office area. And high school hallway is back opened up now, so. But we do need the roof insulation to start coming in. We've kind of prioritized how we're going to use that. First part will be the science classrooms, ag classrooms, the high school office, and then performing arts if we can get them in. That way we can get our classrooms, continue to keep pushing those forward. But we do need a little luck. We've had some bad history of not getting the roof insulation when we've needed it. So we need some because we're in a good spot right now, but we're going to get behind if we don't get that. And so wish us some luck on that.
And then it's about it. Questions? Thank you. All right. Administrative reports. Dr. Murphy.
Just a couple of things. As I mentioned in my report, we did receive the Root Ed grant, which was for I High School Academic Advisor. After meeting with Root Ed, having some webinars, meeting with Ms. Henry, Mr. Jones, Dr. Robinson, having some discussions, we've decided to defer that until the fall, just with the thought that we feel like it will give us more opportunities to kind of lay out a plan, get some applicants, and open that up. If we choose to move forward now, we can, but that person would have to start February 1st with the training. And we also have found out that it doesn't necessarily have to be a certified school teacher. It can be someone that has some backgrounds in social work or some other areas. And so moving forward, we will kind of lay out a plan for that, but then plan to defer that to the fall. So that was good news. MSIP 6, I don't know, it's not so much good news, but that is continuing to evolve. And so the committee is continuing to meet at DUCY. A few changes that have occurred to the timeline that I presented at the last board meeting. We're now looking at that preliminary, excuse me, preliminary guide to be posted early 2022 in February, which I think was along the same lines. Have a public hearing then in the spring of 2022, and then implementation will begin in the fall. And rather than it being maybe presented and secured, it will instead be available to public. So we're looking at still 70% performance based on performance, and that would include the MAP and the EOC scores. Also includes subgroup scores, which you're familiar with, but they're looking at maybe tweaking that definition or that identifier. They feel like subgroup might be something that's derogatory, I guess. But those will still be included on the APR under the performance, and then 30% will be under continuous improvement. And so if you were around years ago with MSIP, it included surveys of the faculty, surveys of your students, surveys of the community and your families. And so that will be a piece of the continuous improvement, as well as success for these students. So looking forward to that actually being defined so we can kind of move forward and create our plans for improvement. And then I included for you some information for the school report card. There's some great things included in, and there's some things that we know we need to work on. Of course, attendance, we were low, 79.3 overall. Again, you know, that goes back to COVID and, you know, the illness and things like that. Great news with our average ACT composite. So that is up to 21.3, which is great and outstanding. Our suspension rates are lower than the state, and then of course, our academic achievement on our assessments. We are performing higher than the state. So there's some good pieces of information, and there's some things to celebrate, and again, some things that we need to continue to work on and continue to develop. So the full report card is available via that website. Any questions?
Is that free reduced lunch? I was building up, or down?
Thank you. It is down. And last year, that number is based on direct certification. So families that have qualified for food stamps have a direct certification number, and then the state sends us that report, and those kids qualify. Last year, as you know, everyone was free lunch, free breakfast. We've continued with that this year. So getting families to fill out the form has been very difficult. So they assure us that that should not have a direct effect on our funding, but there's still some question about how that will be reported because families' meals are free, and so they're not filling that out.
It's a problem over the state of Missouri.
Yes.
It's a nationwide. Most schools have seen it get down to almost 20% or better. Once they did that, we went from in their 50s to 38 or 39 or whatever it was. And we're not, that's not uncommon, but what does bother everybody is that's how we get our title money. And so that can have a major impact on title budgets down the road if that's, if they start using a new number.
So that's not a sign that people are doing better?
I would say not. It's just that with everybody already getting free, nobody's filling out the paperwork, and so we're, we and everybody else are in the same boat.
Well, as you can see, Park View had, you know, a large, 41% is free reduced. And CIS, those families, those parents usually are the ones that fill out the paperwork. When you get to CBMS and CHS, the paperwork does not make it. And right now, it's not available for parents to fill out online as part of our online enrollment, so it's an actual physical piece of paper. So the kiddo would have to get home with a piece of paper, have parents fill it out, and then get it back. So probably if we found a way to make that electronic and could somehow embed that into the online application, we would probably get additional forms filled out. But you have to fill out the exact form. But no, we've had conversations about whether or not that would be an option to put that exact form on the online enrollment.
Other questions, comments? High school.
Well, as Dr. Murphy kind of mentioned, the high school average ACT score went up to 21.3, which is up almost a full point from the year before. So considering what they did during the pandemic year, I thought that was something major to celebrate. And we actually had more students take the ACT last year than we did the previous year. So we have more students doing better on the ACT. Another thing I'd like to celebrate is I think we have four or five staff members that finished advanced degrees this semester. So we're going to have some extra masters and specialist degrees out of the high school building. So, you know, they're continuing to grow professionals, so I think that's important. Like to brag on our kids. This happened right after our last board meeting, but the band in choir did an awesome job. They sounded great, patriotic concert, and I thought our student audience was great. They were very attentive, so we thank them and appreciated their attention to that. And then later that day, we also had our winter activities pep rally. And I've had several staff members come up to me and say it was one of the best pep rallies we've ever had. So, you know, we're starting to get some momentum back after having students out of the building periodically for the last 18 months. So some good things going on. And the other thing, we did our second IPI data collection, and almost 50% of our data collection, the teachers and students are of level five and six. So it's student-driven. Teachers are more facilitating than direct instruction. So lots of collaboration and discussion between students. I think that's leading to higher level of learning, and I think that's probably pretty indicative of what's going on with our ACT score. So some good things going on in the classroom as well.
Questions, comments? Okay, board, you have your high school activities repoiled. Any questions of anyone for that? Not. Middle school, Mr. Erdman? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Collins.
We're out of order.
Down the line. Apologize. Ms. Collins.
That's all right. So there's lots of new celebrations for the middle school. The first one is we had our very first ever school-wide newspaper come out this year, and I brought everyone their own colored copy. So take one, pass it down. It's called The Dragon's Nest. There's enough for audience participation too, audience members too. So take one, enjoy it. Written, created, and totally and entirely done, designed by Mrs. Zubek's family time. And they did come up with the name themselves. You'll see that there is, it's all student work with some, there's lots of pictures and some quotes in there. So take it home, enjoy, put it on the fridge. If you need something to read, that's good reading material right there. Other fun celebrations to have, if I could draw your eyes to the board report, is the QR codes are posted and up in the building. So if you have not taken a gander around CBMS outside of every single employee's door, that's every secretary, custodian, cook, para, both of our nurses, counselor, every person that works in our building has a QR code outside of their everyday work environment that has one kiddo at least saying how much they appreciate that teacher and what an impact that they've had on their life. And everybody needs to have that type of, Mr. Fisher has one, I had one, every single staff member has one. So please take the time to go through and scan those. We plan on leaving those up all year long, and as long as teachers want to have them up, they're more than welcome to do that. It's not just for our staff to know that they're valued and appreciated, but it's also for anybody who is in our building that doesn't know who our staff is. Then they can easily walk up and scan and watch a video of a kiddo explaining who this teacher is and what they do. So that's one celebration. Also wanted to point out that our cafeteria took it upon themselves, the cafeteria ladies, and they did a change drive for the Cameron food pantry. And they collected, and that money was given to the food pantry this morning. They collected $167 through the month of December, and it was just ran, just pennies, quarters. You could put it in twenties if you wanted to, but anybody who wanted to put in money could do that. And Gwen came by and picked that up today. Also, last Monday, CBMS did a canned food drive for free admittance into their basketball game. So we were able to donate a whole bunch of food, which Gwen took with her as well this morning when the food pantry came by. And then a couple of other celebrations here. For the very first time this year, we are doing AR celebrations for first semester, and we had well over 50% of our classrooms met their AR goal. So this morning and tomorrow morning, kiddos in sixth grade and seventh grade were invited into the cafeteria to goof off and play games and have fun before school. And then everyone who met and exceeded their AR goal, also tomorrow, will have a celebration during RTI class. So during sixth hour, seventh hour, eighth hour, depending on which grade level that they're in. And just a few more celebrations. I don't want to take up too much time, but our ELA and math tutoring did take, it was finished last week. We did six weeks of that for any student who needed remedial tutoring. So that ended last week. We did ELAs on Tuesdays and math on Wednesdays. And last thing is for your calendar. If you are interested, the Pearl Harbor Day Assembly is rescheduled for, I believe, February 20th. It might be the 25th. But it's rescheduled for February just due to, that was our first day out of being under the mask mandate, and so we felt like December 7th was just too much for the kids. It's the 25th. I just looked. It's on Friday, the 25th, Friday, the 25th. The assembly will start at nine if anyone's interested in coming.
February 25th.
February 25th. It's a Friday. Yep.
Questions? Thank you. Now, Mr. Erdman.
All right. I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Carnegie and Mr. Carter. We had our winter concerts last week, and they rocked it. Heard a lot of good feedback from parents. Really cool to see our third grade kids and our fourth grade kids with Mrs. Carnegie. They had speaking parts, just, you know, acting out, you know, the concerts were more interactive across the board. Mr. Carter himself was very interactive with the parents, and played the guitar for them. They sang Silent Night at the end. So very good night, lots of good feedback from parents. We did take a little bit of a hit on attendance last month. It was on the rise on my November report, but got quarantined pretty hot and heavy right after Thanksgiving. But Mrs. Sedgwick and I are working with teachers and getting kids that were quarantined, getting their work caught up, and we look to see that attendance to go up by our next board meeting. And then just a busy couple, next couple of days, we have our AR and class parties, AR rewards tomorrow in our class parties tomorrow afternoon. So lots of celebrations going on tomorrow. And then, not Friday, Wednesday, Mrs. Sedgwick and I are honoring our distinguished dragon kiddo. So gonna have some hot chocolate and some fun games that morning. So busy next couple of days.
Questions, comments? Thank you. Ms. Ondry.
This evening, I wanted to hone in on the work we're doing at Park View with Trauma Informed Schools Initiative. I don't know if you had a chance to read my board report or not, but we've been working really hard to work with the staff on recognizing trauma, not just in our students, but also in ourselves as educators. I'm not sure if you've done much research on the topic or not, but there are a lot of coined phrases out there. One of my favorites that you could research is called compassion fatigue, and it's defined as the cost of caring. And I think in all of our buildings, we have a lot of wonderful educators who go beyond academics and work with our students in the social, emotional learning field, doing a lot of things that perhaps you wouldn't traditionally think of educators being tasked with doing. And along with that comes a lot of stress, and that's what we're working on right now, is just recognizing that in our staff at Park View. We've went through a variety of activities over the last quarter, giving teachers a chance to voice where they're at emotionally, and trying to look for ways to make improvements, to make their job the best that it can be so that they can be the best they can be for our students. And in that process, it's been very, very powerful, I would say. Had a lot of wonderful meetings, a lot of great conversations where teachers have been open to sharing their thoughts and feelings about how best to help each other in this time that we're dealing with all of these extra issues that we've never faced before, as well as different things that we can do to help our students. So I'm really proud of the work that they've been doing and excited to adopt some collective commitments. We've been working on coming up with a lot of different we-will statements, kind of like the process that we go through when you're creating a vision and a mission statement for a building or a district. We're doing the same thing in our building to help our students who are suffering from trauma. So we've come up with a lot of wonderful intentions, and we're going to vote on those on our professional development day on January 7th, adopt those as a building, and then put that into practice. And then along with that, our next step is to start exploring the social, emotional learning, just different strategies that we can implement in our classroom to make sure that we're providing our students with everything they need to be successful.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
All righty. So first of all, we had our preschool program tonight, which was absolutely wonderful. If any of you guys got to peek your head in and see the little ones participating, they did a great job. It was awfully cute. So thank you to Angie for that. A couple celebrations, they could be considered a negative, but I want to highlight the way our staff has handled them. So we have increased our virtual services. We went from 20 to 53 this last month, students that needed virtual services for special education. And so our staff had to contact each family member, set up services, and provide services virtually while they're still teaching in the classroom. And so not every single family accepted the virtual services. Some said no for the few days that they were out, but most did accept it. And so that was a lot of extra work on the staff, but they did a fabulous job, jumped right in, didn't wait for a doctor's note. They just said, you know, kid was absent for two days, contact them, found out they were out, and started services. So that way the kids didn't get so far behind. Big shout out to CIS teachers. We had Ariane Davidson and Kristi Jessen volunteer to provide the virtual services because we have a substitute in for our fifth grade teacher. And so instead of having a substitute cover, they jumped in and covered, which is awesome for them to be good team members. And then I wanted to say thank you. I put it in the board report, but I wanted to say thank you guys for allowing us to hire that floating para that has been used daily. Sometimes there's a tug of war on who needs it the most because we have had some shortages. I know Park View had, what, four pares out for a few days in a row. CIS had a good chunk of our special education teachers or staff members out. And so we would rob Peter to pay Paul sometimes, and everybody worked really well together to get that done and make sure we had enough hands where hands were needed. So I appreciate all the buildings working together, but also that extra para was very nice to have. We have a hard time getting para substitutes in, and so having just an extra set of hands is really nice. Hands matter when it comes to the little kids. So I think that's about it. I think everything else is in there. That's pretty much the big stuff that we have.
Questions? Before we go to our maintenance and technology reports, I just want to say on behalf of the board, thank you administrators, your assistants, and others that aren't here, teachers, pares, all of our staff. We get what you go through, and we appreciate it. It's not told thank you often enough, but it is noticed, and you are valued. So thank you very much for what you do. Okay. You have before you the maintenance and technology reports, ambitious maintenance schedule.
We've got a lot of stuff on our schedule, probably over Christmas.
Yeah.
All done.
Very ambitious. Any questions on those reports?
It was nice to see we're starting to recover some Chromebooks, too.
Yes.
So get a few of those back, maybe.
Okay. Communication, citizens, teachers, or students, comments of anything that's on our agenda. If not, items for consideration, our safe return to in-person and continuity of services plan.
Yes. Obviously, this is on the board agenda every month. We do have changes to it this time. Since the last time, there have been all types of lawsuits filed on all types of ends because of the COVID return plans and masking mandates and all those different things. We will be making changes, or I'll be recommending changes to our safe return in-person continuity of services plan. Mainly those will include a kind of a test to stay type situation. I think it's going to be the best way for us to maintain what I think is not only our obligation, but our duty as a board, and quite honestly, is given to us by the state statutes that we make sure kids are safe in school. But this will allow us to keep some of those quarantined kids that maybe instead of going home, we'll be able to keep them in in a test to stay situation so that those students will be able to stay in school, we hope, by getting more time in school and yet continuing to keep our school safe. So we'll be putting information out to all parents before the, probably around the break time, so that we can let parents know that when we come back that we'll be making that change. And so we will be doing that. Effectively, a student is a close contact and would be contact traced. They'll have the option to test three times or based on when we find out at least twice so that they can stay in school and we don't have to send them home. Obviously, parents will have that option to decide whether they want to keep their kids home for 10 days and be quarantined, or whether they want to do a test to stay option. But we feel like it's a good option that we'll be able to keep more of our kids at school. And again, I think it's important to realize that we do have an obligation to make sure that our schools stay healthy and that we, you know, limit the use, the limit the passing of all communicable diseases as best we can. And I know we're only talking about COVID, but it's a slippery slope, whether that's measles, chickenpox, all these different things that that was originally designed for. So I appreciate the board's support on that.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve, as we do every month, our safe return to in-person and continuity services plan.
Some move.
By Mary, seconded by Dr. Wykoff. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have the motion carries. We have before you some resignations and Scott Meyer's retirement.
Move to accept.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Pam. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries. There's a list of employees, personnel to hire, to make employees. Motion to move. Dr. Wykoff?
Second.
Seconded by Ann. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. And then there is a list of substitutes to hire.
Some move.
Moved by Mary. Who did that? Michelle, did you?
No.
Okay, Mary.
Second.
Seconded by Michelle. I thought so. Discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have the motion carries. And then our Belcher Scholarship nominee.
Natalie Gare.
Natalie Gare has been nominated to the Belcher Scholarship. It's a very prestigious scholarship presented by the Missouri School Board Association, and so school boards approve him. So a motion to approve Natalie as our Belcher Scholarship nominee.
Second.
Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Now you have before you the draft of our FY '21 audit.
Yep. We just pretty much hot off the presses. We were actually just able to get that, the final draft today. And I appreciate all the work that Chastity and everybody does, but especially Chastity. She has to go through the wringer on this thing. It's never, it's never easy, but I appreciate the job she does because I think it's important that we have a good financial standing, which I believe we do. There's always going to be a few material deficiencies that they'd like to see us improve. This is my 11th audit as a superintendent, and I will guarantee that if I had 10 more, they will have some type of deficiency that they would like to see us clean up or rehone or do something. But overall, the audit was a clean audit and happy with the audit. We'll have to turn that into the state of Missouri, actually, by the 30th of December. And we also have to do it for our bonding capacity and all that with LG Hard. So we have to go through what they call continuing disclosure, and this is just part of the process. But I do appreciate, like I said, Chastity to work on it. She does a tremendous job, and it's a lot of, a ton of back and forth with our auditors and trying to do all that. it's a lot of, a ton of back and forth with our auditors and trying to do all that, and uh, she makes us look good, so. And she does. And we thank you, Chastity.
Motion to approve this. Motion to approve the audit. Seconded by Pam. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, that motion carries. Okay, and we have approved registered youth apprenticeship program through our vocational school.
Yeah, this is actually one of the things that when we talked about last year, when uh, one of the perks to going over to uh, St. Joe to the uh, Career Center over there was the ability to have our kids do more of an apprentice program. So this actually is a memorandum of understanding between us and the uh, St. Joe School District for us to allow that. I think we've already got, correct me if I'm wrong, Brett, five or six? Four? So uh, students are participating in that, and this is just year one, so that was one of the biggest perks for us, being able to go over there, was our kids could get involved in apprenticeships that much earlier, so we're excited about that and continue to do that, so.
Move to accept.
Moved by Mary.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Michelle. Discussion. None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the not motion carries. Board member comments, input from the board.
I just, I had a couple comments, I just wanted to um, say that it's not, and noticed how stressful this semester has been. And I've heard that from several people, that this year has definitely been harder than last year. So um, please pass along to your staff how much we appreciate what they do, and that we understand that this um, education has become a challenge in ways that probably should never have been, but it has been, so um, that I encourage you to stay focused on why you came into the profession, and you guys are doing a great job, so I wanted to say that. And then for the community, I just wanted to make sure that the community is aware that we are mandated by a statute that it is unlawful to have sick kids at school. And so when we're making these return to learn plans, um, if, we don't get to look at um, things that are happening in the news, we have to follow state statute. And so there is a state statute, one sixty-seven, um, point one nine one, that was established in nineteen sixty-three that says um, we are required to keep kids healthy and safe. So we're also required to keep them in school as often as we can. So I think what we've done tonight has been a great effort to keep kids in school as much as we can, while balancing keeping kids healthy as well. So um, just great Christmas and thanks, so. Yeah, take some time off.
Remind the board that our January and February meetings are one night later on Tuesday, because January is uh, holiday, and February is President's Day holiday, so we don't meet on Mondays, the holidays, it'll be on Tuesday, January eighteenth, and Tuesday, February twenty-second.
And it'll probably happen in April as well.
It does, happens in April, but I can't remember yesterday, so I'm sure not gonna remember April. Any other comments? If not, the meeting's adjourned, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you.